This meeting to order, like thank everybody for coming and taking time out of your day. We're gonna start off with David to give you your fast report and then I'll go around and recognize all the affiliates that need to share information, will you?
All right, since this is a meeting, we do actually want to have you take a vote on something. It is called together as a meeting. So we need to call this.
Like the call is meeting to order officially.
Passing out a walk-on item. We ran into a problem and we figured the easiest way to fix it so that you are able to continue the services you're getting. We want to open a account or P-Hards with First Federal, which we can get tomorrow. So we don't have a period where we do not have the ability to acquire the stuff we need for the emergency response. Typically, if you use Bank of America, there's always a delay between when we send bills. You figure this will be much faster, more economical, local vendor, and we can have that credit now during the storm while we need it. It's been reviewed by our attorney, strongly recommended by him. He's signed it, just up to the Board of County Commissioners. You want to open an account with First Federal for P-Hards?
I'm moved that we opened an account for P-Hards.
Oh, yeah, approve the resolution.
Prove the resolution.
Prove the resolution. Twenty twenty-four R dash forty-five.
Got a motion, second, all papers say aye. It's over, you aye?
Yeah. So other than that, like I said, Mr. Foreman Apologies couldn't be here, he couldn't make it.
You're the one who's going to make it.
Of course, Commissioner Williams will be here when traffic lets him through. Having said that, it's been a very, very busy day. We are to a point where we need to start making some decisions after you hear from the logistics and how we want to move forward, how we want to continue to staff my support services. We've had a lot of discussions on those. Right now, we are going through supplies faster, stock them. Who's that? I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Curtis.
We're waiting for Kevin to go last. I'd like to recognize your support team. And if I miss anybody that put your hand in there, but Ms. Katina, Sheriff's Office.
Yes, sir, we're still providing support in the pods and shelters as needed twenty-four seven until they close.
Okay. It's A.P.
We're still fulfilling state missions and a contingent to North Carolina.
Todd Woodburn?
All schools beyond the mark.
Air conditioners are not, right?
They're not.
They're not working. They're all blown, man, that's got Todd. City Fire, please?
We're back to normal operations for now, seeing the laws and stuff.
Keith?
Police Department's on normal operations. We are doing security at the Richardson Shelter and also we're still manning EOC twenty-four seven.
Is there, are there a lot of tendies at Richardson at this time?
Well, they're leaving during the day and then coming back at night.
Okay.
Certain areas of the city, like down by Columbia, got hit pretty hard, so they're not going to get followed for a while.
Okay. City Manager, Mr. Robenbaum?
City's pretty much done with the cut and toss operation, but now they're into the pickup and we are under contract with one of Kevin's groups to help us with that. That's what we are.
National Guard?
The National Guard is currently working the seven pod sites that we have throughout the city. The numbers for today, we have twenty-five packs came through Deep Creek, ninety-five through the Richardson Community Center, ninety through Mason City, thirty-eight through Lulu, six hundred and forty-seven through Fort White, one hundred and forty-six through the sports complex, and one hundred and twenty-five through Windfield. We also had hot meals delivered to a couple of the pod sites that share locations with shelters and our soldiers helped hand out that food as well as helping transport a wheelchair from the Richardson Shelter back to the personnel on special needs that people are staying at that shelter. I have more, it's a lot, but more detailed information as far as consumption of supplies and what we have on hand, if that's something you'd like to hear as well, or I can get that to you later. Be safe, bye.
Fine, all right. Thank you. The, okay, Mr. Crawford, Jeff?
I have the, uh, coming fire departments back to their normal staffing and all. We have been assisting a lot with the building of the facilities at all the different pods and all throughout the county. We've often been assisting some with some of the will be checks and stuff like that that's been going on. But other than that, we're back pretty close. But I did want to relate to four of the ones that will be doing the damage assessment and all tomorrow. We will have some of the MREs and some of the water here tomorrow morning that they're able to take out and give out during the day if they come across people that truly need them, so they'll have a little bit of that to help supply with. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Red Cross? What's that?
I'd like to apologize that we're not able to produce the meals, the hot meals that we had promised. The information I was going off of, I think, was given to me in good faith. I think it just, there's some people trying to make something happen that just wasn't in the cards. I was told that our vendor wasn't able to provide the food. In other words, the Red Cross doesn't cook the food. We buy it from a restaurant, usually a lot of times Cracker Barrel. I don't know if there was, if their supply chain had been disrupted, I'm not sure what the exact problem was, but they weren't able to provide the food. I didn't learn of this until this morning. I apologize. I'll make sure if I make an announcement that I know the questions asked now that I didn't ask before about down the line is where is this coming from, what's gonna have to happen? I was just, Mr. Sinner was here at the Saturday meeting, he's the one that was helping me do this. He was a higher up on the total poll and I was working with him up and, but he's been reassigned to another place, so he's not even, I can't even speak to it right now. But I do apologize for not being able to.
Thank you for your effort. You've been definitely, every meeting, we appreciate it. Health Department?
Same with the Health Department. We still have the special needs shelter open at Richardson Community Center. Currently have six patients in there and we're just waiting for power restoration for those patients because they are either electronically dependent or they are oxygen dependent. So that's what we're waiting for.
Do we have representatives here from the ambulance of Columbia? Toby called me earlier, he had to go to a funeral, but he said everything, they're running through. I think today. What time does that take? Take?
First thing.
First thing.
Can I ask something? The place, it's strange right there in that district, it's by the old nursing home from years ago where they used to practice football. It's, I guess, McFarland, Soliris? Yes, Soliris is, now, right there behind Soliris is an apartment complex, it's got a lot of people oxygening in.
That's right.
I think that's been took care of, right?
I actually called Jeff, let's just see if you're on that.
February, they're doing a lot of.
They called me about it, they said there were ambulances there, I said, well, we're good then. I didn't even realize.
Actually bringing a couple back into their homes that have been displaced.
Door, no, I called her back, Jeff, that's me, you spoke, and they're ticked with that. They, they.
That's your black.
Yeah, they, that team was knocking on doors, so they, one of the, one of the patients, one of the ladies thought there was a C O two.
And they called me, I said, I don't think that's my dish. It's all good, it's, they were doing a heck of a job over there.
Okay, Jeff? You got anything to report?
Damage assessment.
I don't know much.
Damage assessment teams were initiated this morning doing the field work. We've got twelve people, which comprises of seven teams covering the nine districts or the nine zones. They hit it hard today, I think. They said, well, about a thirty or forty of them they went to. And so biggest thing is we need them to call in, that's the process to call in. And we don't know where to go unless we just walk up, you know, drive up on them.
And I will tell y'all, everybody that's called them since I've told them to has called back or said on Facebook, they were so nice, everybody was so nice to them. It's hard to be nice sometimes when you're in that. They've been, they've done a great job those days. And then just David makes sure Heather posts that, you know, make sure they call in. That's really kind of relying on us being declared works.
Right, we are also sending out a form that imitates their pads, people can actually fill out themselves, port, kind of helps them. In addition, we've reached out to our federal legislatures and our state legislatures, spoke to them, so pushing every angle we can to make sure we get declared.
There was a post on Facebook earlier that we're not a declared county and people went a little wild, you know, about that, which I understand why they went a little wild. So I made a post and I think the county's going to, we're, we are not, but we will be if we call in the C I C line and show them how much damage we have. So I think people have started calling now, you know. They, I don't think they understood that that's what really helps you get FEMA.
I'll be sending them all to you. Okay, let's see here, saving the power companies back here for last, because I know we all got a pile of questions. Clay?
Okay, we're in Columbia County, we're gonna have eighty-six hundred meters yet still to restore. Eleven hundred, well, one thousand and one hundred and eighty-one of those are in Three Rivers. I'll get with the board after this, we can drill into that a little bit for you. And when I say Three Rivers, I also have Wilson Springs. So to me, it's one place, but it is separate. But that's how many meters we got there. So, and those will be the ones I talked about yesterday to repeat. We started pushing crews in there today, we've had crews in there assessing things. We did pick up some meters from Three Rivers already going down newer and so we're working on the rest of that, getting that. Alachua County, we had fifty-one hundred meters still out. We got five hundred li men right now working in Columbia County and Alachua County. Our counties joined, so there's our territories for Clay. As Alachua County starts clearing, we're pushing those crews into Columbia County. So we're servicing them and feeding them and all that at the Beach Office. But so at the end of the day, hopefully by tomorrow and into Wednesday, we'll have all those crews in Columbia County if we still need it. We're hoping to still have postal bug Columbia County up by ninety-five, ninety-eight percent by Tuesday night. We're still on pace to get there. So after that, every resource we got will be in the Three Rivers, Wilson Springs area, trying to get that up. So I hope to have three, four hundred people in there by Wednesday. So hopefully we can make it into Thursday, but we do still have about a forty-five more holes in there that need changed and things like that. But we got some people in there and meters have come on down that road, so it looks looking positive there. Just trying to think if we had any more. But any questions on, or why, I'd be happy to.
I'll get with you after the meeting.
Okay, we can get in the weeds here pretty soon.
Carol, FPL?
You guys have been able to see Colin and Shane, but they saved the best for last. Very proud to announce that FPL has achieved a restoration rate of ninety-nine point seven statewide. We restored falling heli and now we're converging on all of our troops and resources on the hardest hit areas. Statewide, we restored power to more than six hundred and eighty thousand customers. Our smart grid technologies have allowed us to avoid over a hundred and eighty-five thousand outages avoided due to the technology on the lines. A restoration force that's been brought to bear in Florida is eleven thousand workers, men and women from twenty-three states as far as way as Colorado, locally in Columbia, Columbia, I'm sorry. We had over four, I think it's fourteen, six ninety was the outage originally of those. We have original tickets, we're down to less than a hundred. We do have currently seven hundred and eighty, or seven hundred and eight customers out, but we've got crews arrived at many of those ticket locations or en route for most of those. And so we've made considerable progress over the last couple of days. And so I know for those of you who have seen the crews on the, on the, on the roads and everything and appreciated everything that's been done, but it's, it has been an asset effort and love to see everybody keep running into back in power and some, that's a good, that's a good response, but we still have at the current time, seven hundred and eight. We're gonna continue to work into the evening as long as it takes to get everybody back on, who can be back on.
Yes, sir.
Two final items is, we do have individuals that have damage to the customer side, their weatherhead or other facilities that will need to be repaired. And so we urge, you know, them to go ahead and get those repairs made. And then secondly, as we are continuing to re-energize lines, encourage safety, let's still continue to treat every down line as if it's a live line. If you have any questions or if you have any family or friends in the area, we're happy. We've been pinging a few at different locations that are still remaining out and so we're happy to do that for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Get down to Swan Valley?
Hello, Swan Valley Electric. For a little, like I suspected, co-op employees, a total of thirty-four, line workers in the right-of-way crewmen. Today, we have a thousand four hundred and eighty-one workers in I-CO. That's forty-three times the number we generally have in a field on holiday, so you can imagine the logistic and communications challenge that we have. Yet, as of this morning, a little over seventy-two hours after restoration began, forty-one out of our forty-two main distribution feeders, it's ninety-eight percent of it energized, power had been restored to seventeen thousand, that's fifty-nine percent of the co-op's consumer members. And there were two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven to I-Commander reports of damage to our system, including four hundred and fifty-eight broken poles. I'm now very pleased to tell you that our goal, as sent to the Governor's Office last night, is to have power restored to ninety-five percent of our Columbia County consumer members who can safely receive it by eleven fifty-nine this morning. After that, of course, it takes a little while longer, as Carol mentioned.
Where, where are the areas that you think won't be open by tomorrow night?
Do you know? I do not know. I can find that out for you.
Yeah, if you could get David a map of that, where you can.
I don't know that it'll be a general area, they might be dispersed quite a bit due to specific circumstances, maybe, you know, like Carol mentioned, maybe they can't receive power. But I will try to get you kind of a knowledge of how things are going.
Okay, did I miss anybody?
Oh, guys, did I come back?
Yes, sir.
If people cannot receive power, if they do need their equipment at their home, their, their weatherhead or their meter box to be fixed, we do suggest that they get a licensed electrician to do that and they can get from us a full harmless agreement. We, if they sign that, give it to us, we will not wait for them to get a building permit if that's necessary in county. We'll go ahead and hook them up. We can get that to anybody, our li men should be giving that to people when they see that they need to get their six limits. But we've also got that available. How can you do that?
I'm not, but I guess I am gonna kind of speak for Troy Cruz, our building inspector, but I think he's reached out to all the power companies, he's explaining to I that everything looks hot to you guys, hooked up, then he'll get to the inspection aspect of it, because it's just so overwhelming right now, you know, it's just, and I think they're helping on the assessment drive too.
We can't guarantee that it's safe if we, if the building, the building inspector has looked at it, but we will issue a, you know, full harmless agreement so that they can, we can get their lights back on.
Okay.
We came in, ninety deal very shortly.
Say again?
It's a dispatch inform before meeting started, that ninety would be open first.
Okay.
Right.
Hey, Ross? You get caught in that bad traffic too?
I ended up, when I got to seventy-five, they turned me around.
Yeah.
And I went there by the fair ground and I guess all the traffic going on the Brown Highway, Lake Jerk, over the Ash Road.
Down through Burke. Yeah.
But you missed some of the reports on the MREs and water and everything, but we shot one. Rocky Ford was a bunch of tombs for that.
What do we decide to do with that?
Are there MREs? Are there MREs anywhere now? That you know of?
There's some out of some of the spots, we maxed them out. Just some of them, I think, over the last couple of hours. I don't know how much is left, which I don't know, but I don't know, I can't play right now.
Okay, with that, if I haven't, nobody else, Jay, you're.
We're good, courts were open today and everything's operational.
Okay. The, I see you're back up that gun, yeah. All right, Mr. Kirby?
All right, so when we started off, we said we had five hundred per on the construction site, had north of five hundred locations. We have completed cutting and tossing everything, but central about sixty-five locations, they're all the power lines here, okay? So you went north of five hundred, sixty-five, all the power lines, and you did begin phase two this morning of your actual cleanup. So that part's perfect, right? Everything was great. We always reiterate about free, no contractors, but on the property line, property line, talk about our garbage that's still going, same way, one day by. Jeff talked about damage assessment, we got that kicked off today. Reiterate to our National Guard folks, and everybody's doing real good, everybody's teaming up, helping each other. Visitors today, my numbers are a little different, like just two or three than his. Deep Creek, we had twenty-five visitors a day, ninety-five at Richardson, ninety at Mason City, forty-eight at Lulu, six hundred and forty-two Fort White, one forty-six at Southside, one twenty-five at Windfield. Individual sheltering, nine at Deep Creek, six at Richardson, inclusive of special needs, two Fort White, one at Windfield moving to Richardson. What does that tell us? We're thinking about, we need to talk to board, we've got a little homework to do right quick. Plan on running about nine o'clock tonight, all the locations, we have a, okay? Obviously, based on your power company's report, majority of our problems for power will be solved tomorrow, except for Three Rivers. Okay, so based on the numbers we're looking at, it's just simply the fact, based on comments I've heard back from field personnel, people are driving around like a buzzard, getting stuff coming back, getting from other towns, counties are coming in. We're thinking about, let's take it down for tomorrow's purpose. Obviously, Fort White. Windfield's over the north, Richardson in the middle, the Southside's in the middle, right? So we, we start ramping this down, as most all your places have reasonable power, okay? So based on logistics and numbers, what we're seeing, I want to communicate with the Board of County Commissioners, let's take it down to Windfield, Richardson, Southside, Fort White, tomorrow.
I got more people at Deep Creek than I have at Rich, I mean, at, at Windfield. I got more folk at Deep Creek than I have.
Based on today, that's not true. That's based on the numbers, but I mean, I'm just saying what the numbers read. At Windfield, you have one hundred and twenty-five people visiting a day.
Yeah, but everybody got lots out there now.
Okay, that's what we're saying, though, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so you're thinking Windfield could get scrapped?
Well, I'd rather keep Deep Creek open.
That's fine, that's fine, but you're trying to ramp it down, okay? We'll go Deep Creek, okay? We got a north side, two in the middle, one, and obviously Fort White, six hundred something, right? So everybody's good with that, it was a hot mess to put this together, we put it together. And I've learned a lot about state agencies and how you're supposed to order stuff and all that, and, you know, we understood, we pulled the ox out of the ditch, we're gonna pay a bill on that, because we didn't follow protocol. We all, we all understand that, right? So if that being said, and let's ramp it down, there's four locations for tomorrow, we'll kick it on seven, run it to nine, I'd recommend, let's revisit again about four o'clock tomorrow, we can always say, well, we got a problem, might need to open another day, okay? So basically, your chairs, the end of the day, start off five other locations, got it whittled down, sixty-five spots of power lines, beginning what we call a final cleanup. I think everybody worked their tail off, make all these locations work on logistics side, let's ramp it down to those four locations, let's get it kicked back off, let's visit back at four o'clock tomorrow, and if we still think we know what we got going on and our provider tells us we're doing our thing, I think we can back off having a meeting every day, because now you're starting to really clean places up, okay?
So you want to keep everything open all day tomorrow?
Yes, sir, when I say everything, based on the numbers we're looking at, keep four locations tomorrow open. Richardson, Fort White, Deep Creek, and Southside.
Middle of county.
We're gonna have to have one in my district tomorrow, and I think maybe Mason City may be that.
Well, Mason City had twice the folks at Lulu. I just want you all, Mason City, I just want to have five shelters or five parks tomorrow.
Then we'll look at the numbers, that's.
That's right.
I mean, now, but never just, most of the people in Mason City have power now?
Some of them do, no, and there's, and even over at Lulu, they have all people have power, yeah. Am I right? Clay? Oh, yeah. Ray?
Yes.
Over at Lulu?
Yes.
You don't have everything lit up over there, do you?
Yeah, we're working that way, I can check on that status.
Okay, see, they're not, they don't have, they don't have all, everything hooked up for us there.
But they, they said they will have by October, not.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, by Wednesday night, but that's what I'm saying, if you cut.
Tomorrow night.
If you cut everything off. Tomorrow's Tuesday.
My day is ready to go. Tomorrow, he may not have everything hooked up till tomorrow night.
That's right, I, I understand. I mean, we can do anything we want to do, guys, but just remember, what I want to emphasize is based on what I'm getting from the field, they're abusing it, let's just get it out there, okay? We are paying the bill, I want to make that crystal clear. When we decided to act this hard, there is a formal process you go through to accommodate reimbursement practices. We skipped that practice to accommodate these needs. So when we're sending these semi-trucks full of ice, all these raw materials, we will be paying for that out of pocket, we did not follow protocol because it's time since.
We know Deep Creek is twenty miles.
Yeah, Deep Creek, I have it about it. Lulu, Lake Butler gonna hit it hard, people may.
We know Fort White is fifteen miles.
Mason City is probably.
Mason City, we're a state. I mean, I agree with Kevin, that's two places that need to be open. Now, whatever else were you opening up?
I mean. Can I just keep the simple name? Five locations I'm watching for a vote, is that okay? Richardson, beauty center, open or closed tomorrow? And before we get started, when I say open or closed, what's about bathrooms, ice, MREs, a whole nine yards.
So you're gonna close them tomorrow evening or tomorrow?
No, sir, I'm asking right now, for tomorrow's purposes, we're gonna run them till nine o'clock tonight at all locations. What you're currently running is Deep Creek, Richardson, Mason City, Lulu, Fort White, Southside, and Windfield, okay? That's what you're running today. For tomorrow's purpose, I'm saying, you want to open Richardson.
So whatever you say, that's what we open tomorrow.
But he has numbers there, maybe y'all need the numbers.
Not anybody around Richardson back up, I mean, we're talking about Fort White, they said that'll be.
The special needs is what, I've been hearing about Richardson.
But let's hear from the Health Department, special needs.
We have six clients in there currently.
Eight clients?
Yes, we are waiting on power restoration, because they're either oxygen or electric.
Can we keep the shelter open without supply?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's special meaning.
We need to keep the shelter open, but I don't know that we need to stop water, MREs and tarps.
Okay, so I need to vote open or closed on Richardson? All that want open with, for special needs only.
Special needs only.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, you want to open Richardson tomorrow, special needs?
Okay, before, Kevin, if I may, okay, simply, Deep Creek, I'm gonna make a motion, I can. Deep Creek, that's the way you want it, right, wrong? Deep Creek, Mason City, I mean, Mahlfields, Fort White. Am I missing five? And special needs, Richardson.
Richardson?
Special needs.
Right, 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 you need that.
Okay, the next was Mason City?
Mason City. Deep Creek. Fort White. And Southside. And I, I'll make that in the motion.
Southside Fort complex?
Yeah.
Correct.
That's the middle of the county, yeah. According to the number that Kevin presented. And that's the only one that got a handicap. Or a child. Correct. So I know how people want their handicapped child on their day.
So basically, we're going seven locations at five for tomorrow. And then we're revisiting at four o'clock tomorrow, right? And then hopefully, our providers have it all back on, we can ramp it down again.
And I had that in the motion, I'll second. Got a motion, second, I'll, I'll oppose.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy, would you like that to say in support of the notice?
Say that one more time?
Your motion is to open those.
Well, we're gonna readdress it tomorrow. Okay, we'll readdress it tomorrow. Because I feel pretty confident, just spending some time at Southside today, that the MRE water thing should be a thing of the past tomorrow. The showers and stuff are really being used, but from what I've seen, it's a, and I hate to say, but majority of the piece, you know? And so that's, that's my opinion, but, you know.
So, I have one question. If we do close one of the shower sites, can we please have that contractor move those bladder Fort White?
Okay, whoa, whoa, whoa. That's over, I'm glad you brought that up. Okay, there's one thing, well, if you think I learned, there's one thing I know for sure now. If we're gonna continue doing showers, we need to get our, get our mind wrapped around, we have absolutely no authority, right? Those showers, you can't touch them. I don't get, I can't believe they're listed for work. You can't work on them, you can't dump, and it's a contract, it's power plant. So we are limited. Everybody in this room's calling about showers today or bathrooms. We are as helpless as a tidehog.
But if they're not gonna work, then I will come get them.
So here's the thing, the reason you experienced the problems, them being dropped off and then you having to wait, their vendors came in and hooked them up and all that stuff. Their vendors have to maintain them, their vendors have to dump them, and their vendors have to do all that, is because it's their contract, their equipment, and you're not allowed to touch their equipment.
And, and, and what I mean, touch their equipment, when they got filled up, you know, we all know our providers around here, make phone calls. No, that's not ours. Hey, guys, no. So I finally figured out, no thanks. We're, we have no control over working on them, servicing them, any of that. So we get through this storm, we'll revisit how we do that. It's, it's hard to control something you have no control over.
So what he's saying is if you want to be able to control that, you have to own it. That's simple, you have to.
But the, the process, back up a few minutes ago, we made a cautious decision to do our own thing to provide our citizens what they needed in a timely fashion. And we, and we take the bill for that, right? If you're gonna get reimbursed for these bathrooms, and you will, you have to go this way, but you have no control. So unless we get our mind that we need to go buy ten more bathrooms, but we're elsewhere, you have a five-year, I'll be a six. Right, so you got it, but the public has to understand your hands are tied.
I'll explain to them about the outside contractor.
Kevin, who is the provider of the bathroom? As far as, is it FDM or?
So we go through FDM, they have a contract with Guardian or Gordian or some company like that.
The actual company.
Who then has a contract with somebody else.
I'm just saying, for what Kevin was securing yesterday about no water, does that another? That in the future, when we do use them, because we got to have them, we just need to do the signage thing and, you know, hopefully it's twelve years from now that these are provided by outside contractors, county has known, because I know you were catching about no water.
I know I'm catching.
Oh, I've been hearing that.
Yeah, it's so, it's one of them things you're gonna have to have, but we sure can. And I don't, I can't say that I blame the contractor because that is their equipment, that's their.
It is.
Millions in order with the investment, you know, so.
Now, what else I've learned, my folks do this every day all over the country, is our people really got excited about it. Because they said service from twice a day for dumping water was normal, and it wasn't out here. So the contract that's in place has worked in other places for years, I got it to get it on. Whatever reason, our usage was hidden.
It's just like being ashamed, we're talking about yesterday, there are forty-seven affected counties and they're, they're getting pulled, you know? And even the contractors didn't probably suspect this, you know, as far as health.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that we, we, we need to remember on the next event, when we have these portable showers and bathrooms and wash, washer mats, that you got to have somebody to keep the hose. And the contractor does not, does, does not do that. Tell us, or to Kevin?
They do.
They do.
They don't then, okay.
Let's talk about the contract, what is the definition of the contract? I, I think it's what, you want your grass moved three times a week, once a week?
No, one bathroom clean two times a day.
I think that is not the contract that the state gives. We want a higher level of service than that vendor will provide.
It goes right back to your orders, your MREs, your tarts, what, all of that. It wasn't Shane did his job, he put it in system. And he entered it, I saw it. But the process takes.
I don't remember them cleaning them there.
Yes, I saw them at Richardson.
One problem at Fort White was that there wasn't water at one time, and people were going on.
Well, the problem at Fort White, that's what was called. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, both bladders have holes in them, so you can only fill them so full.
So they were damaged when they were running, when they were running.
And, uh.
And we aren't allowed to.
You got to fill it up a little bit, then you might got to have somebody there all the time, just filling it up, you know?
It, it, and it's only, when I say my opinion, because I've lived it, so it's a valid opinion. Where we've got to get together as a team and say, are we gonna do a minimum level of service that these contracts, whether it be bathrooms, MREs, or waters, or tarts, are we gonna live what I call a minimum level of service? If we have a higher expectation, whether it be clean the bathrooms, right? We have to gear up for that, that level of service. I've said, I think that's what I've learned about.
My question would be, do we have to go through the state contract to be reimbursed?
Yes, yes, that's your challenge.
That's your challenge.
If they've got a system, that's what I've learned about them, they've got a system. And if you want to get reimbursed, it, it's kind of like our roads. If y'all remember, not to drag this out, but the first Navy No Twelve, it was a flooding event. I used Millings on all these roads to get people back and forth. FEMA took a position, wire using high dollar material, get folks in and out, I said, because the line route won't stand up. But there was a big debate on whether or not that Millings asphalt business, this high, was reimbursed, that was the whole argument. I said, well, it is what it is, I saw what we can use, that's why we get all our money back. So in this grand scheme of things, and I'm saying this with honest taxpayer dollars, in the grand scheme of things, this is low dollar wise compared to what we're really doing out there, guys. So we're in here fussing about nick, nicks and dives of our tax dollars compared to the operational side, we're spending a lot of money. So in my opinion, if you want to offer your service to your taxpayer, you continue doing proper protocol as it allows you to, and you supplement or shore it up with local monies. To me, that's a combination factor.
So, Chairman, to me, we got our list higher. I think probably if we're gonna supplement cleaning, it would be in Fort White we supplement. You know, we, we just have to figure that.
And I've had my maintenance crews go around doing that.
Ninety screws have been doing.
Twice a day. I've had my maintenance.
It's not something we gotta have, we don't have to have it from the contractor, we can do them, you know?
Now, when you say issue that validates that, when we go back to somewhat normal operation, only got X my people. So like, you know, it loses, you don't.
So the courts are open, but the janitorial staff run at the courts because the janitorial staff.
And for no other reason, that's why it's imperative, if the courts and everybody's going back to normal operation, you have to ramp this down.
Sure.
Somewhere on resource.
He, he, he is why it's important for the bathrooms to be cleaned. We men don't have to sit on the suit. But women have to, and it need to, those bathrooms need to be cleaned for women.
Yeah.
We can go around the barn somewhere.
And that's why Kevin pulled all those screws out of the bathroom.
That's why I pulled our guys. But Commissioner, what I'm saying. Right, your guys that own the four elves, for all the judges, you know our taxpayers, four elves, they're pulling the bathrooms. Well, it's something gonna get in there.
But our contractor need to have probably one of those clean in the bathroom.
That's one thing they should do, that problem.
Okay.
Bleach them out.
But they did not want you touching their bladders?
I understand.
Not want you emptying the tank?
And in their defense, I don't want somebody else working on my booth.
I agree, I agree. It's their investment.
So one thing I would say is, we need to make a good record of the pros and the cons of what we're doing it. We need to have a workshop on this, when it's all over.
And Commissioner Ford, you and I, Ricky, talking phone. We all have to admit, we just haven't heard it too much. We didn't do this. So we, we started this somewhere in the middle of the storm.
So we had, we had bathrooms, Fort White.
We went from a handful of shelters.
Yeah.
Seven.
Right, four to seven, that quick.
I mean, seven, that's a lot of shelters to maintain.
So if we're gonna continue doing all that.
We, we, we didn't discuss all these on the.
The other thing is, we started the event with ten pallets.
The, the problem, that's.
Okay. So Kevin, you got, you got everything there?
Yes, sir.
That we're done there? Okay, so. Wayne, you got anything else?
If, if Swann, Swann Valley electric man say.
Swann Valley, Swann Valley still, he, he saved it.
All right, that's great.
I'm saving Shane for last because I wanted him to hear all this difference, this way he can say, oh, y'all were wrong, you're right. So we'll say, but the, Rocky?
The sheriff's office needs clarifications on security for the pods.
So for the pods in areas that are, you're shutting down temporarily until you regroup tomorrow, do you still want us to maintain the security there until that decision is made? And that is removed off the property?
Yes, sir. So tomorrow, we will be manning Richardson, Mason City, Deep Creek, Fort White, Southside.
So she's asking the two account man to.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, and Timmy obviously will shut down this way. This way.
What is there now, like them pods just got their cleanings and all that? Anybody can use them while we're there working, right?
No, we're shutting, you're shutting.
You're just cutting them off?
Yes, sir. About nine, you are cutting off Lulu.
And Winfield?
And Winfield.
Lulu?
Lulu and Winfield be turned off. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So reevaluate tomorrow, okay, before we get to the, Rocky, you got anything else? Yes, if somebody, you just pointed your.
Oh, he said nevermind.
Okay. Okay, Shane, give us a wrap-up summary of what you did there.
Yes, sir, uh, thank you all.
Where's this other storm too, because that's the question I'm being asked now.
And that is the scary thing right now, but we're still watching, the hurricane center hasn't actually picked up as a formal storm yet. But it is kind of brewing in that area where Helene brewed. Uh, right now, the best guesses with little model guidance that they have is anywhere from Texas to the Keys. You know, it's kind of that broad of area that we're looking at, but it's something we're gonna have to watch because these gold storms, as we saw with Helene, once they start ramping up, it does take a while for them to start coming our way. So it's something we'll continue to remain vigilant. And just real quick, I want to thank all the partners in the room, thank the board, everybody for their support this week as we work our way through this event. So that's all that I have.
Thanks, Shane. And Carol, you can't send nobody home until that storm's gone, okay? So everybody's got to stay out there.
I'll be your commissioner.
Nothing else, that's from Lieutenant German.